... on the phone, so we'll get started, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors' formal meeting today on September 21st, 2016. We will first start off with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Today's invocation will be said by Erica Flores from the PIO office, and the pledge will be said by Tim Motor, who is the constable administrator. So if you could all please rise and welcome Erica.
Please join me in a prayer. We pray that this meeting be guided with wisdom, courage, and compassion. Please help our board make decisions that are good for those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. All right. Our clerk of the board, Ms. Fran McCarroll, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Get my mic on here so I can call the roll. Supervisor Chukri.
President.
Yes, I just need to let you all know that Supervisor Chukri is here via the telephone this morning, so he is in attendance. Supervisor Barney.
Here.
Supervisor Kanasek.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
I'll be here in a few minutes.
Here.
And Chairman Hickman.
Here, thank you Fran.
Thank you.
All right, Melissa Gabel is here today with the friends, so from Animal Care and Control, welcome, Melissa. Who's your buddy?
This is Harry. Harry is about 12 years old. He came to us as a stray. He has very little, he doesn't have very many teeth, so his tongue sticks out, which I think is adorable. He has a little bit of a fatty tumor under his arm, but he just needs a loving home. A lot of times we see these old ones come into the shelter and they just kind of get passed over, and they're wonderful dogs. He's great in the car, great on leash, loves to go for walks, very sweet, very social. So I think he would be a wonderful pet. We just need someone that's willing to give him some time and maybe take him to the full-service veterinarian and have his teeth checked out, but he would be a great companion for someone. So I really hope someone will come for him today. He's available today at 11:00 at our West Valley Animal Care Center at 2500 South 27th Avenue. And I also want to remind everyone that we do have a one-page snapshot about some of our programs, and this month we are featuring our volunteer program. So that's information back on the table as you come in.
Great.
Thank you.
I thought he was sticking his tongue out at Danny. He's making eye contact at you.
I was gonna ask him his age, but I thought that might be inappropriate.
Maybe that's why he's sticking his tongue out. All right, so we'll go to the next item. Fran, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do have three things to bring to your attention this morning. The first item is on page seven of your agenda. It is item number seven, on page seven. It's the patent easement abandonment, and a letter was received about this just, I believe it was yesterday, so they have asked that we would continue this item to the October 5th meeting, just so that we can kind of investigate any statements that are in the letter.
Well, I need to get to that then and just ask for a continuance then?
Yes, on item number seven.
Okay.
And then on page seven, excuse me, page 10 of your agenda, item number 17. Because Youngtown has not had, has not yet had an opportunity to approve this agreement, they have asked that this item be continued to October 19th, and since that one isn't a public hearing, we can simply continue it from here. So that item is continued to October 19th.
Okay.
And on the very next page, page 11, item number 19, the school district governing board elections. Everything is fine with this item, we're simply going to add at the end of the first sentence, "And appoint the persons named to the listed positions." When we cancel school district elections because there's only the right number of people running for the same number of seats, or maybe not even enough people, then the Board of Supervisors, by canceling this election, the Board of Supervisors goes ahead and appoints those people. They don't have to go through the election process. So we just wanted to clarify that that's what would happen with this. So it adds "appoint the persons named to the listed positions."
Okay.
Okay? Those are all the changes that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Fran. Okay, then, we will now then recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors. Cindy Kolozensky is here from the Library District, so we thought that we would move her up because she has a presentation she'd like to make.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chairman Hickman and Supervisors. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you the success of our 2016 Maricopa County Reads Summer Reading Program. The goal this year was to get everyone to read 20 minutes a day, every day, and we built upon last year's accomplishments so that we could emphasize the fun of reading and promote lifelong reading habits. Our goal was to help build home libraries and connect readers with community experiences. Of course, another focal point is to stem the summer slide. So we were able to track achievements and award reading points and digital badges and implement custom content geared towards specific ages, communities, and interests. So the results are pretty amazing. There were over 40 million reading minutes logged, over 77,000 participants, with over 23,000 of those that earned a free book. Over 890,000 were awarded digital badges, and over 116,000 challenges were completed. We wanted to take the opportunity to thank our county partners, MCA, Parks and Recs, the Communications Office, and of course, a special thanks I need to shout out to my incredible MCLD team, who every year continues to just push the limits and do amazing things. We partnered again with all 62 public libraries in Maricopa County, which we're really proud of. So I know that you're all very aware of the supervisor challenges and how very successful that was, so we wanted to have you hear from those that took your challenges. And we've put together a little video to explain and to take out, to take our camera out to our actual libraries and let them tell you a special thanks.
I took Code Club at the Fountain Hills Library.
I drawed a picture of a flower and read America's Deserts.
I read Chicken Sunday.
I read this book, G is for Grand Canyon.
I went on a hike and I saw some lizards and birds.
I read Who Is Jackie Robinson? I also played Catch the Cross with my family and my friend Carly.
I read Green Eggs and Ham and I ate eggs.
It was great. There was tons of nature and I just enjoyed being out in the wild and just being with my family.
But I got to read a lot more than I usually do.
This page of the book, because it has a cowboy on it and I like cowboys.
My favorite part about Code Club was learning how to code, which was very fun, and I got to make some new friends and also meet some of my old ones.
Um, 'cause I got a lot of power and news.
I've learned about desert tortoises.
I got to launch rockets, and I also got to launch water bottle rockets. It's pretty much just rockets.
What was your favorite thing that you did? Was it the reading or the eating the eggs?
Eating the eggs.
How do you like to eat eggs? What's your favorite way?
Scrambled.
Legends of best football players and that Super Bowls in the NFL.
Till We Have Faces by C.S. Lewis.
The Healer's Apprentice.
Diary of a Zombie Goldfish.
Diary of a Wimpy Kid.
Land of Stories, it's a really good series.
John and a Littleton Cave Mice.
Captain Underpants.
Savvy, and that is my most favorite book ever. I love it.
Harry Potter.
Um, I like Brown Bear.
Brown Bear.
Thank you, Chairman Hickman.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Barney.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Supervisor Kanasek.
Yay!
So again, thank you for your support, which makes this program possible and just encourages, you know, everyone to participate, and we'll have to get creative for next year, so start thinking. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Cindy, we appreciate it. It's nice to see something like that happen in the community, and you guys call attention to it, so we appreciate it. All right, we will now adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Go to the clerk of the board section. Fran, is there anyone present to comment on items 6A through H as of yet, before I read them off?
I do not have any speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, number, item number six is a liquor license applications. A is new license for a line tie. B through H is special event license for Our Lady of Guadalupe Mission, St. William, Risen Savior Lutheran Church, Safe and Secure, Inc., St. Rose Philippine Duchesne Parish, and the 180th Regimental Field Artillery Association. The board will now consider items 6A through H.
Move approval, second.
I have a motion and a tie for second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under statutory hearings under transportation, as we've mentioned before, number seven is a patent easement abandonment, road file number PAB-0027, and I am...
Motion to continue that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to continue, and a second.
Do we have a date?
October 5th.
The motion to continue, October 5th.
To October 5th, and a second. Thank you, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under clerk of the board, item eight, an application for St. Rose Philippine Duchesne Catholic Parish fireworks display. Number nine is 2016 Report of Active Special Taxing Districts. Under clerk of the court, number 10, official appointments and oaths of office. On item number, item number 10, Diane Barker is with us today to speak about it. Welcome, Diane.
Well, thank you, Chairman Hickman, and Board of Supervisors Diane Barker in District 5, and I'm waiting to hear from you, too. And on this particular item, I definitely support the oath of office, and I believe that it needs to be in writing, which I understand you're the Board of Supervisors doing. I have never, ever found that the clerk of Superior Court, or any of their deputies, or the clerks or other assistants has specifically violated the oath, but I want to remind that when you take the oath, you're taking it not only in words, but internally, what they say subscribed. And it's my opinion that our public servants should every day get up and remember that they're serving the public and they're not serving anybody else, or maybe who has donated to their campaign. So good luck.
All right, thank you, Diane, thanks for joining us today. That's the end of the speaker slips on that item, so the board will now consider items 8 through 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 8 through 10.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Still under county officers, under sheriff's department. Item 11 is a donation for the MASH unit. Item 12 is an IGA with the City of Mesa. Items 13 through 16 are MOUs with the City of Peoria, United States Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives. On the agenda, which has been crossed off, so for a date later, so we'll hit that one soon, I'm hoping. Then the next one is United States Drug Enforcement Administration. Oh, item 15 has been withdrawn per the department's request, so thank you for that. The board will now consider items 11 through 14 and item 16.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion, motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now under sheriff, continued. Item 17 will be continued to the October 19th board meeting, as we talked about. Number 18 is a one-time addition to fleet and operating equipment transfer of a redlined vehicle. Number 19 is school district governing board cancellations, and number 20 is an offer of settlement and abatement. The board will now consider items 18 through 20.
Mr. Chairman, I would move those items for approval with the note on 19 that was, additional language is read by the clerk, that the appoint, and appoint persons named to the governing board positions.
To the listed positions, yes.
I don't know, I can't read my own writing. I meant what she said.
And, Mr. Chairman, I will second that motion, and just a quick comment on item 19, these school governing board elections. These brave individuals in these various school districts have taken on this opportunity of guiding their school districts in the direction that is going to benefit, of course, the kids, but the entire community. And as a former school board member, I just want to commend them for stepping up and serving. This is a non-paid position, and it's a lot more hours than you would ever anticipate, so kudos to those candidates that decided to throw their hat in, and looks like they're going to be serving come January. I'll second the motion.
Thank you for the comments, Steve. If I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under judicial branch, juvenile probation, item 21, resolution for participation in the State of Arizona Family Counseling Program. Under Superior Court, item 22 is the acceptance of dependency case processing initiative grant. The board will now consider items 21 and 22.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 21 through 22. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under county departments, under air quality, 23, amend an IGA with Peoria Unified School District. Under animal care and control, 24 is a new hope agreement with one-by-one animal rescue. Item 25 is an IGA with the City of Phoenix. Item 26 is amend an IGA with the Town of Wickhamburg. The board will now consider items 23 through 26.
Move for approval, items 23 through 26, it's probably in the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Item, okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under county departments, finance, number 27, funds, transfers, and warrants. Under human resources, number 28, amend premium pay rates and rescind pay differentials policy. Under human services, number 29, affiliation agreement with College of St. Scholastica. Number 30 is an IGA with the Maricopa County Community College District. The board will now consider items 27 through 30.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 27 to 30, and just a quick comment on number 28. This is, this is, this is a nice little touch where we're able to consolidate two policies and just have one, so it really is streamlining what we have here at the county, so it's a good thing.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you, Andy, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Still under county departments, human services, 31 through 32, are contracts with Mesa Unified School District and the Scottsdale Unified School District. Under management and budget, item 33 is a donation for combined charitable campaign. Number 34 is a settlement regarding attorney fees and non-taxable costs in the matter of Melendris versus Maricopa County. The board will now consider items 31 through 34.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman, with a quick comment.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second.
Just recognize there's some in the audience today that are wearing pink as part of our CCC campaign for item 33, focusing on the successful reentry into the community. Oh, there's Fran over there looking majestic as ever. And also a shout out to many in the audience, yesterday was orange for the effort and homelessness, so thank you for your kind support of yesterday's effort in that regard. We're grateful that you came so prepared.
Very good. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question on item number 34, the settlement on attorney fees. What pot, or where were we getting this money? And I know on last month, we had some realignment of, within, within the sheriff's budget to take care of some of the Melendris costs, but this is also related to Melendris. Where, I understand there's a settlement, and I think we're able to negotiate it down to 4.45, but what pot is this coming out of? How are we paying for this? Do we know?
Being that is a financial question, hi Sandy. Sandy Wilson has joined us today, so...
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, this is coming out of contingency. There will, there is money set aside for outside council costs, but this is beyond what we had set aside, so this will come out of our general contingency. One time.
And, Mr. Chairman, Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there was 12 million? Am I wrong? Is there 12 million? Minus now the 4.45? What do we have in contingency? I thought it was 12 million.
That's about in the operating contingency, but this is coming out of one-time contingency, which is closer to 20 million.
20 million?
Yeah.
Very good.
When, when Mr. Gallardo's done, I have one quick question.
Well, how about Steve?
Yeah, I'm good.
Did you have a follow-up? Okay, Andy?
Yeah, real quickly, what, I know, I know this was a compromise, what was it compromised from? What was the full bill charges or as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kanasek, that was 5.99 million, so it came down quite a bit.
So... Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on Supervisor Gallardo's question, we knew this was coming as part of the legacy issues that have been part of Melendris. I hate to use the word legacy, because that has positive connotation, but, so we did anticipate that this would come from contingency, just because we didn't know when, when the settlement would hit and when it would be approved, and so...
And we didn't know how much it would be.
And we didn't know how much it would be. You know, the real challenge, in my observation, this isn't, this isn't the federal court or the monitor, this is reimbursement of fees to the plaintiff's legal counsel, who in many cases would bring a team of attorneys to the hearing, and we'd have one or two, and in the end, the taxpayers get the bill. But to be clear, this isn't, we don't have the election as to whether or not we want to pay this. You know, this is, this is one of those things that, under the statutes, we have a responsibility to pay, and I'm grateful we've been able to, to reduce it by a million and a half dollars, but it's still a substantial amount of money that's coming out of the taxpayers' pockets relative to reimbursement of fees. So I, we just need to keep moving forward and get to, get to check made as quickly as we can on Melendris, and I know that there's a lot of people working to that, to that end, and so this is one step in the process.
Before, before I move on or ask for votes, Steve, I didn't, Steve, you're not here with us today, would you, did you want to make any comments at all, or continue on?
No, I would just add that I concur with what Supervisor Barney said, I think that was an excellent, kind of up to speed as to why, why we're voting on this today and where we are historically, so, thank you though, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, just, just one last quick comment, and I am definitely glad that Mr. Supervisor Barney brought this up. This isn't something that we have a choice on, we've been ordered to pay this settlement. I am also pleased that we're able to reduce it considerably from the original request, but nonetheless, let it be the, the plaintiffs or the defendants, we shouldn't be in this position. That's the unfortunate part of it. You sit here and I can start writing up a wish list, what could we have done with 4.4 million dollars? What services, what opportunities we could have offered the taxpayers? So, yes, this is going directly, this is one invoice, or one of the invoices, there'll be additional that are coming from the plaintiff's attorneys, and should they have the slew of attorneys? Probably not. I wish they didn't, but nonetheless, we're on the hook of paying for this, or I should say the taxpayers are on the hook of paying for this, and this just, again, another unfortunate incident. I mean, what we could have done with the money, other than paying it to attorneys, but I understand why we're doing what we're doing.
So am I hearing that you are volunteering yourself to call the ACLU and ask them to discontinue sending so many teams of lawyers to Arizona on such an important topic, but...
I don't, I don't blame the plaintiffs that brought the lawsuit, but I do have some strong concerns of what has happened and how we got here. That's the issue, and we should have never been gone down this road. I think the focus, at least for me, is how do we get in full compliance ASAP? This way we can reduce the cost of larger attorney invoices, I guess.
And Steve, I think, I think you've talked for the whole board on that, all of our, all of this board is, is very considerate of how much money this is costing the Maricopa County taxpayer, and we will continue to do our best to try to bring all of this stuff to a resolution. So thank you all for your comments, and thank you...
I made a motion.
And there's a motion, and do I have a second?
I will second it and respectfully ask that the sheriff's office not try and claim that million and a half dollars in negotiated reduction as some kind of a savings to the taxpayer that they're, they're responsible for, because, you know, we're, we've seen some funny math over there before, and that's one I don't, I don't think I would be surprised by, but, and I say it somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, it's, it's, it's an incredible amount of money, as you've all said, it's, I think on some respects, I think we all believe that the ACLU probably, you know, layers and overcharges and pads and everything else, but in the same token, I think they've brought some value, shed some light on some, some serious problems here in the sheriff's office and at Maricopa County. But I, too, wanted to end and commit to, to work towards that end.
Great, thank you, thank you, Andy, and I didn't recognize you. Thank you, Bill Montgomery, for joining us today. You're a fellow elected, so thank you for being here in case any questions were asked of you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
It was actually Bill's team that helped negotiate the reduction.
Yeah, that is true. Bill's team did help negotiate the reduction, so thank you for the reduction.
You can claim credit.
Not in your budget, though, Mr. Montgomery.
You can claim credit. So that matter passes unanimously, so thank you all very much again. Thanks for joining us, Bill. Still under county attorney, or I'm sorry, county departments, medical examiner, 35, exception to special work assignment pay policy. Number 36 is a transfer of expenditure authority for special work assignment pay. Parks and Recreation, number 37, is amended joint-use agreement with the Maricopa County Flood Control District. And under procurement, number 38, is pharmacy services, CHS. The board will now consider items 35 through 38.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Still under public health, number 39, purchase order for IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services, number 40, partnership agreement with Adelante Healthcare. Number 41, rescind action and approve revised amendment to lease agreement with HTA Thunderbird Medical LLC. Number 42, student rotation training agreement with University of Phoenix. Number 43, letter of agreement with Vitalist Health Foundation. Number 44, grant fund non-recurring budget appropriation adjustment. The board will now consider items 39 through 44.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Number 45, under risk management, IGA with the City of Phoenix. Under transportation, number 46, an IGA with the City of Litchfield Park. Number 47 through 49, bids and awards for county arterial project, construction of roadway widening, and construction of storm drain improvements. The board will now consider items 45 through 49.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 45 through 49. Second motion.
Great, motion and tied for second again, I'll go with Andy on that one. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Board of Supervisors, on item number 50 is a reappointment to the Community Development Advisory Committee, and that is actually D4, so Edward Keinson-Wickenberg, thank you very much, Edward, for, for serving on that, in that role again for District 4. The board will now consider item number 50.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 50. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under the Industrial Development Authority, 51 through 54, resolutions approving the issuance of bonds for benefit of Banner Health, Christian Care Retirement Apartments, Inc., Christian Care Mesa, Inc., Christian Care Assisted Living of Phoenix, Christian Care Surprise, Inc., and Paragon Management, Inc. The board will now consider items 51 through 54.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman, with just a word of congratulations to the IDA, this is...
This is, there's some pretty big initiatives in here that are very impactful, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second, and I would like to say Shelby, and great. Thank you guys very much, that, especially the top one, that, all of them are very important. But that Banner Health one was extremely important to the IDA, and, and congratulations on that. That was a lot of hard work that went into it, and a very large amount, so congratulations with that. We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under setting of hearings, air quality, number 55, Rule 345, which is vehicle mobile equipment coating. Item 56, incorporation by reference to 2015 to 2016. Number 57, rule of revisions. Under clerk of the board, item 58, is proposed Duke Manor Irrigation Water Delivery District impact statement, planning and development. Number 59, planning and zoning hearings. And transportation, item 60, road file number 5911. The board will now consider items 55 through 60.
Motion to approve.
Second, Supervisor Chukri's motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under consent agenda, clerk of the board, item 61 through 65, which include donations, duplicate warrants, tax settlement cases, and other routine administrative actions. The board will now consider consent items 61 through 65.
Move for approval.
Consent agenda items.
Thank you, Danny.
Second.
I have a motion, thank you, Andy. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under addendum, clerk of the board, A1, special event license for committee to elect Danny Thomas Coconino County Sheriff. Employee benefits and health, A2, employee benefit settlement case, number 25276648. Under procurement service, services, A3, amend and change order to serial 13082-CI with CGI Technologies and Solutions. Under transportation, item A4 is Maricopa County versus Jenner Properties LLC. Number A5 is Maricopa County versus Jean L. McFarland. The board will now consider addendum items A1 through A5.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Danny.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We will now recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Under Flood Control District, item F1 is a resignation to the Flood Control District Citizens' Advisory Board. Excuse me. Item F2, amend joint use agreement with Maricopa County. F3 and F4, on-call contracts with StanTech Consulting Services, Inc., AMAC Foster Wheeler Environment and Infrastructure. F5 is a Department of Emergency and Military Affairs Disaster Assistance Award. Item F6 is a Gila River Community Grant 2017 Budget Adjustment. The board will now consider items F1 through F6.
Move for approval, these Flood Control District items.
Thank you, Danny.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Bill Wiley, for joining us today. We will now adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and reconvene as, reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Under 66, public comment. Fran has just handed me speaker slips. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. All right, we have 10 speaker slips. Fran, would you please remind us of the rules on the public commentary section?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. After we have already called public comment, we do not take any additional slips on public comments, so that part is closed, the slips that are in. We ask that those that are speaking would keep, not make repetitive comments, but indicate that you're agreeing with the previous speaker. Public comment time is limited to two minutes per speaker, and the clock will sound a 10 to 15 second warning, and then a final warning ending bell. The chairman will be calling up each speaker in an expeditious manner, and we ask that you refrain, refrain from clapping or other distractions that might distract from a speaker. And your comments should be addressed to the board, not to the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Okay, Mr., so, speaker slip number one is Mr. John Rusnick. Thanks for joining us today, Mr. Rusnick.
Well, I've got, yeah, right here, I've got the ordinance 9500.4. It says, "The area no later than March 1908, or 2008, no later than October 2009, commence enforced codes and ordinance necessary to require the parking and maneuvering egress, egress, 3,000 square feet and more." I'm not going to read the rest, because you know it. That is 6,166 feet, and that's not all of it. There's corners that I didn't measure. It says that Maricopa County Air Quality Department is a regulatory agency whose goals to ensure federal clean standards are achieved and maintain resident and visitor of Maricopa County. Maricopa County Air Quality Department is governed by the Maricopa Board of Supervisors and follows air standards set forth by the Clean Air Act. I wish you would do something to get this taken care of. It's been going on for 11 years. You will not do it. One thing I was, more, I'd like you to look at the picture of these fine citizens here bring you on the poop machine that is down in Tonopah. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thanks for joining us. Okay, Ms. Diane Barker.
Thank you, Chairman Hickman, Board of Supervisors. I'm submitting a request for a meeting with Reed Spalding and Diane Barker. And Mr. Spalding sent me a very nice professional email, and I'm just sharing, he wasn't going to have me meet with him unless our air quality director, Mr. McNeely, would be there, because he said that he is the most knowledgeable in regards to air quality. Of course, you've appointed him to be the head, and he certainly should take that responsibility. I've already met with Mr. McNeely, and he has the claim for Mr. Rusnick, and there are many lessons to be learned. I'd like to see that that issue be resolved. Mr. McNeely has a long history of being at the state, the city, and the county, and you don't give jurisdiction to the City of Phoenix when they don't have an ordinance to handle the state law Mr. Rusnick is after. Okay, so I thanked Mr. Spalding, and I said, mostly the subject is the facilities use agreement. I read the volumes of it. There's an integration of public transit, and mobility and infrastructure can affect the goals of less congestion and even better air quality, but there's a bigger issue there in regards to facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Thanks for joining us today. Next up is Ms. Lynell Nolan. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Nolan.
Good morning. My name is Lynell Nolan.
Oh, Lynell, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. At any rate, let me get this going here. I, I live in the area of 31st Avenue in McDowell. I have two comments to make real quickly. We're being overrun with the feral cats and the dogs over in the area, and I'd like to request that animal control do a couple sweeps there maybe once or, once or twice a month. It's just really getting out of hand. Since 2008, I have caught over 433 feral cats, and I continue to catch them, and now we have the dogs, because dogs will not, they will not fall into a cat trap. They're, they're smarter than cats, so we need some help with that. Second thing, I retired in 1988, and since then, I have worked for Maricopa County Elections as an inspector off and on for all of those years since. I'm here to advocate for a pay raise for poll workers. I think it's incumbent upon the Board of Supervisors to consider payroll raise to try to attract more people to volunteer for this job. Poll workers' jobs, there's a lot more to it than what the average public thinks. There's a lot of work involved. It is incumbent upon inspectors, especially at the end of the day, to make sure all of those numbers are right. We can't leave there until those numbers are right. In this last election, I didn't get away from the polls at 10 o'clock at night. We've had problems from people not showing up, and our, our poll workers not showing up, to people, to people leaving early. At any rate, I can't give you all the details on that. I wish that I could, but please consider pay raise. I would, I think they would attract more people, and we'd have to experience less no-shows. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynell.
Okay, sure.
Sorry for the misintroduction. Thanks for joining us today. Adrienne Ayella. Adrienne Ayella must have left. Mary Kyler Snyder. Good morning.
I come to you today as a brand-new volunteer at Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. And I spent last weekend with my volunteer orientation, and boy, did I get schooled. I learned a great deal about the facility. Not only are they underfunded, they're understaffed. So I was really happy to see that Melissa brought the information about volunteering because it's needed. Also, I'm sure you're aware, there was a protest this weekend at both facilities. I did not participate in that, but I did watch on the news, and I have to agree that Melissa, when she was, when she spoke on the news, she was correcting what she said. This is a community problem. And I have a marketing solution. I know it's only two minutes, so I'm going to try and be as fast. I used to work for fire dispatch, and back in the 80s, Maricopa County was the number one in this country for child drownings. How did we solve that? The community got together with Phoenix Fire, and we developed a marketing strategy, which started with simple door hangers, brochures, and flyers. We went out to the community and saturated the neighborhoods with information to prevent childhood drownings. I think this could work for Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. A simple flyer, a brochure, giving them all the information they need for licensing, tags, IDs, chipping, spay and neutering programs, and locations of the shelters. Until we educate the public about the problem, it's not going to be solved. We need to get to the root of the problem and why the shelter is overflowing, and that starts with pet population and ownership responsibility. My email address is on that form. Anybody, please contact me. I'm going to, as a volunteer, speak to Melissa about this, because I've got an entire program mapped out for you guys. Thank you.
Mary, thank you for your volunteerism at the shelter, too. So thanks for joining us today. Yeah. Okay, Ms. Linda Butler.
Good morning, gentlemen, and chairman. This isn't the first time that I've addressed this board. It all began in 2014, when Chairman Clint Hickman was a recent appointee to this board, and within seven months, he and his family decided to build their egg industry in Tonopah in an area that was surrounded by local businesses and family homes that had been established for over 40 years. They appeared not to care how it was affecting their area, their community. The concern for them was that they wanted a short transport for their prison workers, easy freeway access, and ample water. This egg production is not a desirable industry for a residential area, and it was because of those health issues and safety issues that the City of Glendale forced Hickmans to leave that area a few years ago. Last year, in our town of Tonopah, there were over 185 complaints filed. These complaints, a lot of them went to the air quality department, the majority of them. A lot of them were then passed to the state and then back to the air quality department for Maricopa County. It appears that people don't need, don't appear to know where they need to ultimately end up. Neither department appears to be making any progress either with improving the horrible conditions that we're living with out there. Clint Hickman and his family business has a string of violations that began from the inception of building their industry. They were in construction months before they even applied for their required air quality permits. They've put equipment into operation without proper permits, and when those permits were finally submitted, they complained, they contained incomplete information, and anyway, they're, they've been, should have been via, excuse me, I'm sorry. They should have been fined for a toxic spill of chicken carcasses that was spilled and slopped down the center of our main street of our town. I could go into the duties of the Board of Supervisors, you all know that, the Board of Supervisors, and the air quality also.
Linda, Michelle. Two minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
My last response, I can't get to the end, was, could I please have this put on the agenda for the next meeting?
Okay, thanks for joining us, Linda. Appreciate it. Okay, it's Lee Wardle. Ms. Lee Wardle, then.
Thank you, board.
Sure.
Clint Hickman should be sanctioned and prohibited for making any decisions or being involved in any votes or decisions related to, excuse me, Maricopa County Air Quality Department activities and air quality policies and air quality rulemaking, and here's why. Continued violation of the permit odor control standard since initial operations almost daily. The odor control standard is a permit condition which reads, "No person shall emit gaseous or odorous air contaminants from equipment, operations, or premises under his control in such quantities or concentrations as to cause air pollution." Maricopa County Air Quality Department continues to cover up these very obvious and blatant violations and will not enforce the permit odor control standard and requirements to stop the stench. In 2015, there were 120 complaints about the Hickman Egg Factory in Tonopah filed with Maricopa County Air Quality Department, and 65 filed with ADEQ. Almost all of them are related to odor. There will even be more in 2016. Maricopa County Air Quality Department did not do a new source review as required by the Clean Air Act when the initial permit was issued on November 20, 2014. It is worth noting that Hickman Family Farms have violated other non-air-related environmental regulations, too. Hickman Family Farms are an offender and violator of Maricopa County air quality rules and his facilities permit. They believe that their business is above the Maricopa air quality rules and can ignore the rules to expeditiously put their business into operation for the gain of profits. Then they arrogantly continue to not comply with the rules and permit conditions and expect forgiveness, forgiveness from Air Quality Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wardle. Thank you for joining us today. Okay, Ms. Lorna Propper.
My name is Lorna Propper, and I'm here because I do not think Clint Hickman can adequately make decisions regarding air quality. I can only surmise that he has gone nose-blind. Living four and a half miles southwest of the Hickman Arlington Egg Factory, I have to live with noxious emissions of ammonia and hydrogen sulfide on a day-by-day basis. It can be several times a day we cannot go outside because it is so hard to breathe. The manure dust and, fills, and, the manure dander and dust fills the air, this facility daily, as they stir the manure several times. They have installed, the dryer they have installed to speed up the processes even worse. It smells like burnt feathers and manure, and the plume of dust is a lovely shade of brown. I have brought pictures to show what we are seeing fill the air. How can anyone who is involved in any way with this facility and its lack of concern for the health of the neighbors give an opinion on any other possible violations of air quality? Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Lorna. Thanks for joining us today. Thanks for joining us today.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. Clint Hickman should be sanctioned, banned, and prohibited for making any decisions or being involved in any votes or decisions related to Maricopa County Air Quality Department activities, policies, and rulemaking. Here's why. While serving on the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors representing District Four, his company, the Hickman Family Farms, built an egg factory in Tonopah called Tonopah Hickman Egg Ranch. Here are the air quality violations that have occurred during construction and operation. Dust control violation, May two thousand and fourteen. Another dust control violation. Notice of violation for operating without a non-Titel V air quality permit was issued to Hickman's on November twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. It's unbelievable to us that a member of the Board of Supervisors would act so irresponsibly. Violation for manure mounding over sides of a cargo container, September second, two thousand and fifteen. Violation of manure mounding, no tarp, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. When a minor air quality permit modification application was filed on November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, it revealed the Hickmans had operated a boiler for over a year without proper permit. The chickens moved in September two thousand and fourteen. There was no consequence to the Hickmans, and the MCAQD covered up the violation. The application for the permit was not complete and included false information. It should have been deemed incomplete as stated on the form and is a violation of an MCAQ rule. MCAQD didn't reject the application as required and covered it up. And one last thing, I just want to say that you are here for the residents of Maricopa County, not businesses or corporations. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. McGee. Thanks for joining us today.
Good morning. I am Dan Mack from Tonopah. I represent the Stop Incorporated Group. I have a petition here that I'd like to read for. We, the undersized residents of Maricopa County and registered voters, call on Maricopa County Board of Supervisor, Chairman Clint Hickman, to immediately recuse himself from all further discussions and decisions regarding air quality and other environmental issues involving and affecting Maricopa County. Supervisor Hickman's family business, Hickman's Family Farms, is a large-scale industrial egg production corporation that is, it's hard to say believed, it is a major source of local environmental pollution and a public risk to Maricopa County communities, causing valid concerns over suspected noncompliance with environmental laws, including the violation of air pollution regulations. Supervisor Hickman is currently Vice President of Sales and Marketing for Hickman Family Farms, and given his leadership and his influential position over an issue that requires unbiased objectivity and neutrality, we respectfully demand that Supervisor Hickman immediately discontinue his involvement and avoid further conflicts of interest. There's been several continuing complaints of odor. We've been for this board before. Flint, Michigan, boy, they ignored Flint, Michigan for a couple years as well. The EPA got involved there. There's a current EPA inquiry now of Hickman's Farms. It's a matter of time before the House of Cards falls. This is ridiculous that our communities, the residents of this county, have to put up with this. You wouldn't want it in your backyard. We don't want it next to us. Our children are sick. Our property values are gone. It's just disgusting out there, if you ever go out there. This is an item that we've talked about before. How do we get it on the Board of, an agenda item for a future meeting? This is paramount, that this be taken care of.
Thank you, Daniel, for joining us today. Okay, that's the end of the speaker slips. Appreciate everybody coming and seeing what we do, so we will now move on to this, item number sixty-seven, which is the Supervisor's Summary of Current Events. So, first of all, Joy, good morning.
Good morning.
Do you have anything for us today? Steve, out there in telephone land, do you have anything you'd like to talk to us about today?
Well, Mr. Chairman, everything in telephone land as well. I just wanted to thank you for accommodating today, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person with you. You've never looked so good, but that's all in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and you've never looked so good to us either. Danny?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Steve?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. Andy?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy, and I just wanted to point out, so appreciate it again, everybody for being here, being a wonderful set of county workers. Always a pleasure to see you every other Wednesday. I would like to call attention to what's going on in, I believe, Glendale Community College this weekend. It's the Third Annual Stand Up for Veterans event, that Mayor Jerry Wires handles out there. Our county staff goes out there and tries to help veterans with maybe speeding tickets and things like that to get them easily into the workforce and for employers of the valley to hire them. So if you happen to be available, please come out and let's get these veterans hired as they come back from their service. So again, thank you for everybody joining us, and looking for a motion to adjourn.
Still move, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.